I'll go ahead and call us to order and declare that we have a quorum of seven members present. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Mr. Harris. We will begin this meeting as we do all of our meetings with our pledges of allegiance to the American flag, the Texas flag, and a moment of silence. To lead us this afternoon, this evening, wherever we are, we have students from Greens Prairie Elementary and Rock Prairie Elementary, and one of their principals, Donna Barrington and Robin Jones, to introduce their students.
Hello, I'm Robin Jones.
I know, we had decided we weren't doing this, but we are. I'm the proud principal of Rock Prairie Elementary, and our students here are actually going to introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Adley Purcell, and I'm in second grade, and what I like about school is I love playing with my friends.
Hello, my name is Cage Shannon. I'm in fourth grade. One thing I enjoy about school is science because of all the cool experiments we get to do.
Hello, my name is Edward Young. The favorite thing, I'm in third grade, the favorite thing I like about school is when we do math, there are various ways to solve one equation.
I'm Donna Barrington, and these are my two students from Greens Prairie Elementary, and they're going to introduce themselves as well.
Hi, my name is Walker. I am in third grade, and what I really like to do is play baseball with my brother.
Hi, my name is Cooper Hines, and my favorite subject is math, and I'm in third grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and universal.
Join us in the moment of silence. You may begin.
Thank you.
Take a picture.
We have no student recognitions. The College Station High School football team who won the 5A Division State Championship, maybe you heard, they had previous engagement tonight, so they could not be here when we had the ice, no ice day, and had to move the meeting. It did not work out with their schedule, so they will be coming to our February board meeting. So with that, we are done with our recognition of staff and students, but we do have some recognitions nonetheless for our board members. Texas Association of School Administrators has designated January as School Board Appreciation Month here in the state of Texas. School boards across the state do yeoman's work preparing for meetings and advocating for public education in children in their school districts. Our school board is no different. They work very, very hard in service of this community and of the kids that we have in College Station ISD. We have a small program, actually that's not really true. We've got a little bit of swag there for you, a little gift in front of your place. If you could check that out, we have a nice little tumbler with some other stuff inside as well as a Success CSISD notepad, something for you to enjoy and think about advocating for students as you drink your coffee in the morning. We also have some other folks in College Station ISD who would like to thank you for your work and for your service for our school district. So with that, I'm going to give it over to Chuck.
Thank you for playgrounds!
Thank you for our teachers!
Thank you!
Thank you for all these books!
Thank you for supporting extracurricular activities!
Thank you for our technology!
Thank you for our new school!
Thank you for a safe ride to and from school!
Thank you for the opportunity to earn college credits in high school!
Thank you for dual-language classes!
Thank you for our schools!
Thank you for all the people who help our schools run smoothly!
Thank you for providing those materials to help us learn!
Thank you for the nutritious breakfast and lunch!
Thank you for our principal!
Thank you for supporting athletics!
Thank you for supporting high arts!
There's so much that we do in this school district that would not be possible without such a supportive school board. The seven members that we have on the College Station ISD Board of Trustees work tirelessly every month to ensure that we provide the highest quality opportunities for all of our students. Every decision they make is with the framework of what is best for staff and students in this school district. So on behalf of College Station ISD students, families, faculty and staff, and our community, thank you, College Station ISD Board of Trustees.
Indeed, thank you for all the work that you do for our families in College Station ISD.
Thank you for that. That was a very nice video, and I think a good reminder to all of us why we do what we do up here. I guess that'll let us move on to item C4, and let's thank and recognize the artwork on the walls. It's provided by students from Greens Prairie Elementary, Rock Prairie Elementary, South Knoll Elementary, and College Station High School. So thank you to all of those students for their fine work. Next item is the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are item G, item J3, J4, J5, J6, and J7. Does anyone want to pull any items from the consent agenda?
I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda items.
All second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? The motion passes 7-0. E1, board reports, announcements. Anyone have?
I have an announcement. The next Friday, February 2nd, the Education Foundation is having their annual 50 men who can cook. You can get your tickets from any cook or Education Foundation board member, or you can go online to give2kids.csisd.org. Also, Education Foundation scholarship applications are open online due March the 1st. Please try to come to the 50 men that can cook. If you haven't been, it's awesome.
And you'll need a ticket.
You'll need a ticket, absolutely.
Several of us could probably hook you up with a ticket for $60, so let us know.
Anyone else?
Me. I was at Head Start Council this week, and they passed the $2 million grant budget, and they'll be meeting next month to, I'm trying to do this off memory, the meeting next month for the budget to present to us.
Okay. Superintendent report, Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to tell everybody who was not at our earlier meeting that the Board of Trustees superintendent went earlier this month to Austin to be a part of the Schlecty Center for Leadership, part of the board training for a day and a half in Austin. We worked side by side with districts from Texas, Louisiana, Georgia, Illinois, North Carolina, and Ohio, and had good learning, good training, and we talked a little bit about some of the things that we learned and brought back at our earlier meeting. So as we look at the work that this board does, they do a lot to get prepared for this meeting, the reading and all the work that goes into giving of their time and family time to go and train with each other is a really important thing. I want the community to know that. We do a lot of great things in College Station ISD. One of the best things we may do may be Chrissy's Closet. If you haven't heard of it, it is a great opportunity how we serve the members of our community, whether it's our students, our employees, our parents. It has really taken off in the year and a half that is, I guess it's been a year and a half now, but want to talk about how much of an impact that program has made in just the fall of 2017. I've got some statistics for you. We had 197 kids come to our back-to-school event. You may recall that was during Hurricane Harvey. We had people lined up to come to our event, 197. 253 attended the Christmas at Chrissy's Closet event. We served 1,651 during the first part of the year. We've given away 579 pairs of socks, 511 pairs of shoes, 556 pairs of skivvies, over 2,000 toiletries, and the clothing items total at the end of, from August to December 2017, were 5,913 total items. Just want to say thank you to those in the community who've gotten the word out, that volunteered their time on Monday afternoons at Chrissy's Closet, which is located at College View High School. Thank you to Chrissy Hester, the namesake for that, and what you've done to this district, and for Shannon Long and Kelly Kovacs, who really spearheaded that project. So it's a great thing that's going on in our district, just wanted to be able to share that with the community. Lastly, just talk about upcoming events. Appreciate Mr. Williams talking about 50 men who can cook is coming up as our signature event. Hope that you can all come. Also, wanted to mention on February 3rd, that Saturday, a couple of events in the community. We're having Junior Achievement Bowl-a-thon, supporting a junior achievement in our schools, and most if not all of our schools will be participating in that. And then College Station High School football team will be having a parade hosted by the Football Moms. Tiffany, that starts at 10 o'clock, 10 o'clock on Saturday, February 3rd. So a lot of things going on in College Station ISD coming up. Please be a part of it. Mr. President, that's my report.
Great, thank you. Hearing of citizens. Do we have more cards? I have three here. Okay. Is there anything in particular you want me to read or just read this about the time?
Breaking in a new president is tough, by the way.
During this time, public comments are welcome on non-agenda items.
The board will listen, but the Open Meetings Act prevents us from responding to speakers. Please complete the note card, which you've done. The public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Each person has one opportunity at the microphone regardless of minutes used. Unused minutes may not be accrued by another speaker. If five people sign up to address the board on the same topic, a spokesperson will be selected, that's currently in there, we're taking that out, among the five. The executive secretary will time the comments and alert us when your three minutes are up, and please note derogatory comments. Okay, the first speaker is Holly Moore. If you'll please approach the podium and please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Holly Moore. My address is 8432 Turtle Rock Loop in College Station, Texas. Are my three minutes started now? Okay. You just received a handout. As I said, my name's Holly Moore. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm here on behalf of choir parents for the middle school and the high school in College Station ISD. I have a petition here of over 150 names of parents who have signed this. To get right to the point, we believe that it's evident that we are to the point in our school district where we need high school assistant choir directors. Right now, each high school has one choir director, and we believe they need two at this point. We've had multiple conversations with Dr. Ely and Ms. Elder and Mr. Reed, and so, in this booklet that I handed you, that first page there is going to give you some background on kind of what got us started on this process. I don't have time to go into it all, but basically this fall, it consolidated, we went through kind of a transition period with a choir director, and it really kind of caught our attention as to why we need assistance. I'd like to go through those with you. College Station, as you know, has been a rapidly growing school district, and to put it simply, the choir program has just grown to the point where it needs another person to help. Even regardless of enrollment in our choir program, the activities that they pursue and that they do is just too much for one person to handle when you look at, and you'll find in this packet that there's a list of all the different things that they do. Just this November, Kinsale's Corral went to the State Board of Education and got to perform for them, and you'll find that program in there that kind of lists all the many things they've done, including going to Carnegie Hall last year, all sorts of activities, working on the musical right now. One of the most telling things that we found was that College Station is the only school district in our district, 185A, that does not provide assistant choir directors for our high schools. When you look at Region 8 that we're a part of, Corsicana is the only other school that does not, but they are substantially smaller. We are the only school district our size that does not provide this for our students. I could go on and on, I can't do it in three minutes, on why our students need this and how important it is for the various activities. Because of that, I believe it puts us at a hiring disadvantage, because any choir director who is looking for a larger school is going to look for a program that has an assistant director because they understand the scope of this job. So, you know, in order to recruit and retain, you know, top qualified choir directors, we believe that's important. It creates continuity. Okay? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be David Kip.
My name is David Kip, and I'm Director of Choral Activities at Texas A&amp;M University, and I'd like to speak to the follow-up that, and I have three kids that graduated or will graduate from College Station Independent School District, classes of 12, 14, and finally 18. So I'm done, this may, but I'll continue to pay taxes. And with that, I'm here as a concerned citizen, and hopefully my expertise in the area of choral music. When we did this study, one of the things that we found out was not only do we not have assistance in the choir area, but if you look at FA2, period, if the tab there, FA2, you will see that in our district, in our region, we are one of only three school districts that don't have a fine arts director. And with this, the other two that don't have it are much smaller. Later, if you will do a total of the number of middle schools, the number of intermediate schools, you will see we have many more schools than what the others do. So that's our journey. There's no clear, one of the things that's going to be coming up is there's no clear feeder patterning, which is going to create a tremendous problem in the future. And let's talk about curriculum for a moment. All of our fine arts are operating in silos. There is no coordination at all. So what a student learns at the beginning, when they get to intermediate school or middle school, or it could totally be changed because there's no coordination, there's no getting off point for a fourth grader before they become a fifth and sixth, no same thing between seventh and eighth, same thing between ninth through 12th. There's no consistency whatsoever, and right now, we're doing a disservice to our students in that way. The logical thing is to do what we have right now with a combo student activities director, but the time has come when we need to expand beyond that. Let's be honest, when we think about somebody doing athletics, and we think about somebody doing fine arts, usually that's not the same person. I think I just slammed myself in that, and it's not for the lack of any effort of anybody that's involved here and what the staff are doing, it's amount of time. And if we can do this, it'll take load off of everyone else. This is not a luxury, not a necessity. Right now, when we were getting information and asking about this from different people, I had what I consider the top choir director in all of the state of Texas, it gets more people into the all-state program, said if this program comes to be, I want to be your fine arts director. So we already have the people there that could do that. If you have to do one or two of these, I think the most important thing is the fine arts director, and Holly Moore would agree with me at that point, in that this has the impact on the entire district, whereas our assistants have an impact just on the individual schools that they're in. And this would help all the way from the beginning through graduation and would help them do. Sometimes, probably five or six years, five or six times a year, I get a call from a parent who's moving to Bryan College Station, and they say, would you, what would you recommend? Should I land in Bryan? Should I recommend a college station? This is my student. You're in the same place as I am now with the information I have, and I ask you just to do the same thing I did and help our students.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker, forgive me if I mispronounce your name, Jamal Akabani.
My name is Jamal Akabani. I am the father of Ali Akabani in special education. He is a child with severe disabilities. He has Bardet-Bidele syndrome. I live in 3539 Matoska Ridge, College Station, Texas, 77845, and I am going to do the following. This is not going to be very pleasant. My son had an accident, quote unquote, on October 13, 2017, under very strange circumstances. He broke his left femur. The school failed to call 911. According to them, it was some normal accident. They allow us to take us, our son, to the emergency room. We found out that he had a broken left femur. My son has club feet, has severe disabilities. He is morbid obesity, and he has lack of perception because he has Bardet-Bidele syndrome and he has retinal dystrophy. I am here to request the resignation of the superintendent and the resignation of special education director. This is a travesty that I found out that my son, at this point in time, is able to walk because of his condition. The fact that the teacher was not able to take care of her, my son, during that time is not an excuse for this institution to do what they did to him. We provided on Wednesday, on Wednesday, two days before the accident, our own wheelchair to the school so that they can take care of him during transportation inside the school, and this wheelchair was rejected the next day because they said that they had a wheelchair. And then on Friday, he had the accident because they didn't use the wheelchair. I am a father of a child that is going to be suffering for the rest of his life because of the fact that you failed. You failed. Me and my family, you put us on bankruptcy. And that is not tolerable, not for you members of the board and not for you members of the public. Do you know that Texas is the second to last in special education? I request you take into consideration the following. I am extremely upset, not only with the board members, with the superintendent, with the special education, but I am extremely upset to the fact that we never speak for anybody that has a disability in this community. That is intolerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is H1, receive report related to CSISD's bilingual, dual-language ESL programs. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we do six times a year, we have programs that we present to the public and to the board on things, on programs that are going on in College Station ISD. This month, we're going to talk about our CSISD bilingual, dual-language, and ESL programs. With us today is Dr. Marla Ramirez, who has been a little under the weather. I hope she's feeling better, well enough to be able to present and talk a little bit about what we're doing for our kids whose first language is not English. Dr. Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Harris, Dr. Ely, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to share with you the bilingual and ESL programs that serve our limited English proficient students in our district. So we will be talking about the description of our program, our program scope, budget, staffing, goals, activities of the program, performance
data, and needs. So, currently, our models include the bilingual education model, and we have two models. One of them is our one-way dual-language, which is pre-K and Head Start. And that model, pretty much, the students are, the majority of the time, about 90% of the time, they are in their native language, which is Spanish. The two-way dual-language, bilingual model is in K through 6th grade currently, and that model is truly a 50/50 model, where 50% of the time, the students study in English, and 50% of the time, the students study in Spanish. We also have, for the students whose first language is not Spanish, we have ESL services. And those are in content-based with pull-out, where we have specialists that will work with these kids, and that's a pre-K through 6. And then, in our secondary, 7 through 12, we do more of a sheltered instruction. So, right now, last year and this year, I'm sharing to your data, there were 65 reported languages in CSISD other than English. This year, we're at 64 languages other than English. Out of those that are reporting those languages, last year, we had 1,119 limited English proficient students. Out of that count, 715 claimed Spanish as their native language. This year, we have 1,137 limited English proficient students, and 666 are noting Spanish as their first language. So, our budget, in 2016, 2017, we were allotted, the state allotted, for our bilingual ESL budget, $531,471. But CSISD actually budgeted $1,480,575. Out of that budget, we actually, our expenditures were $1,101,179. For 2017, 2018, which is our current school year, our, the state has allotted bilingual ESL $507,700, but our actual budget is $1,429,941. So, our staffing for our limited English proficient program, currently, we have three bilingual certified reading specialists, which are three elementary bilingual campuses. We have 39 bilingual certified teachers, and that includes the three elementaries and Oakwood, 22 bilingual teaching assistants, 12 and 1/2 ESL specialists, one ESL teaching assistant that's specifically designated for ESL, 335 K through 6 ESL certified classroom teachers. That's where the majority of the help comes in. And then, three dual-language instructional coaches that support the bilingual campuses. So, the goals for our program are to ensure that all English language learners master the state curriculum, to develop English proficiency for all students in the program, to develop fluency and literacy in English and Spanish for our dual-language kids, and then also to develop an understanding and appreciation of other cultures. And that's across all of our limited English proficiency students. We want our students to appreciate each other's cultures. So, the activities in our program, the most important and time-sensitive is identification of our students. So, from the day that a student registers or enrolls in CSISD, if their home language survey indicates something other than English on their survey, whether it's their native or their, their home language, we have to identify them within 20 days of enrollment. So, we're constantly doing this. The way we identify the students is through assessment. So, we have an oral language proficiency test that we administer to the students. And then, if they qualify, then we will monitor by doing more assessments. The ITBS is one that we use, the TELPASS, which is a Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment, and then STAR when appropriate. We also monitor these students ongoing, so we're constantly monitoring the progress. And as the students meet what we consider their exit criteria, which is individually-based, then we reclassify them in the system. Our instruction, as I mentioned earlier, is bilingual education or ESL, bilingual two programs. Pre-K Head Start is a one-way. Majority of the time, they're in their native Spanish language. That's how they learn. Or dual-language, the two-way dual-language, which is 50/50 program. ESL, K through 6, again, content-based ESL with a lot of support, or 7 through 12, sheltered instruction. The other activities that we also have is summer school. So, we do have ESL summer school. For our K through 1st grade bilingual ESL students, we are required to have this summer school. Our 2nd through 5th grade bilingual summer school is not required, but it is a practice that we have in place. These summer schools do run simultaneously in the month of June. So, we provide at least 120 hours of instruction, extra instruction for the students in the summer. So, this is some data that I would like to share. So, our TELPASS is our Texas assessment that we give our, our students, K through 12. And in this data, this is composite data for K through 2. 21% of our students in K through 12, which was 467 students that were actually tested in grades K through 2, 21% of them scored at a beginning level, 30% at an intermediate, 25 at advanced, and 24% at advanced high. And I also put the Texas measure next to it, so you could compare us to Texas. In our grades 3 through 12, we had 566 students test here. 8% scored at beginning, 20% of them at intermediate, 38 at advanced, and 34 at advanced high. Another piece of data that we like to look at is what was their progress from 2016 to 2017? So, from one year to the next, for the students who we've had for two consecutive years, what has their progress been? So, if you see this chart in K through 2, we had 59 of our students that we could actually compare have 59% growth of at least one level. We had 6% that grew at least two levels. So, we had at least 65% of our students that grew at least one level. We didn't have any that grew three levels in one year. So, in our 3rd through 12th grade, the same data, or the same from one year to the next, we had 56 of our students grow one level. So, we didn't have any in the two or three level growth, but we did have 56% of our total students tested grow at least one level. So, looking at our STAR data, our STAR reading data for our English language learners for 2017, we had 57% of our students passed the 3rd grade STAR, 60% passed 5th, and 67% passed 8th. In this slide, I went ahead and I took the bilingual limited English proficient students out, and just to share their, their progress. So, the bilingual limited English proficient students, 73% of them passed in 3rd, and then 89% of them passed in 5th. And we don't have bilingual in 8th grade, so I don't have that comparison data. In STAR math, our English language learners in 3rd grade, 72% passed the STAR, 85% in 5th grade passed, and 83% in 8th grade. And then, with the bilingual math students, 68% passed in 3rd, 89% passed in 5th. Then, when we look at the high school limited English proficiency performance, these are, again, our English language learners, our limited English students. In Algebra 1, 83% of those students who took the test passed Algebra 1, 58% passed Biology, and 56% passed US History. English 1, 24% of our limited English proficient students passed the EOC English 1, and 25% passed English 2. So, when, when we look at the results, and we look at all our data, and we talk about our program needs, we need to keep strengthening our bilingual teacher recruitment and retention. Our turnover has slowed down a little bit, but we still have every, because of program growth or changes, people moving in and out, we do usually have to replace at least one or two bilingual teachers a year. And they're still in a shortage across the state, even though we have A&amp;M in our backyard. We are still struggling to find bilingual teachers. We also need to provide professional development, ongoing professional development for our teachers, to help support them, support our English language learners in the classroom. And additional ESL specialists, as we add schools and our student population grows, we need to look at our numbers and look at how we can meet their needs. With that, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome.
And thank you for all the good work you do. I do have a question, and then I'll turn it over to the group. A couple of them. One, that number of languages that are spoken was really high.
Yes.
Are there any, I guess, are there any concentrations of, other than Spanish?
I thought you might ask that. So, so, we, we'd run a report, because if we ever get to a point where we have 20 students of one language in one grade level, we have to start considering an alternative language program for them, like we have the dual language. So, our next runner-up is 85 students that report Mandarin as their first language. And then, next, after that, we have 72 students who are reporting Arabic, and then 58 students who report Korean. So, those are the next three runners. And then, we have others that are in the 40, and then, like, 10, 18. But I know, when, when I ask for that data, I'm always like, "Are you sure?" But yes, I have the data.
And the other question, in, in the dual-language program, there's obviously the, the limited English speakers, and then the, I guess, yeah, limited Spanish speakers.
Right.
If my kids were in it.
Right.
In those test numbers, did that include both halves or only limited?
Only the limited English speakers. Yes, sir. Good question.
My question is, so there were 300, I think if my math is right, there were about 300 students that do not, do not say that Spanish or English is their native language. Now, are those students also in the dual-language program?
No. If Spanish is not your first, like, your primary language, or your language that is limiting your English, they will be in an ESL program. So, that's where we have our ESL specialist and our classroom teachers working with those students to help improve their, their English language.
Okay, even in K through 12?
Yes. We do not have a specialized program for a language other than English, I mean, other than Spanish at this time. At this time.
How large do we need to get before it starts to make sense for looking at it, for, say, Mandarin Chinese?
20 students in one grade level. So, so that, by law.
That 83 is spread out amongst a large number of grades.
So, yes, yes, yes. So, when, when we look at the 83, let me see. I can tell you, so 15 were in kindergarten, 14 in 1st, 16 in 2nd. So, we didn't have 20 in 1. So, I do have to admit that I had one teacher, she was Mandarin-certified bilingual, apply once for our bilingual positions. And I thought, "Ooh, we should keep her in our back pocket," because I think we're, we might be heading that way.
Don't lose that number.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez.
Thank you. Next item, H2, consider approval of 2018-19 College Station ISD school calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, it's January, so it's school calendar time. Dr. Trammell is here to share the information that we, that she has gleaned from the community on the web, and the conversation that was held with the District-wide Educational Improvement Committee. And we'll have a calendar recommendation for your consideration briefly. Dr. Trammell?
Okay. Good evening. First of all, wanted to just go through briefly the steps that were taken to create the calendars. Around November, the DEIC started looking at calendars. We had four potential calendars. And I want to remind the board that we were able to have greater flexibility in the calendar because of being a district of innovation district, so we could start a little earlier. But we were slightly limited for the 2018-19 school year because of the weather conditions and the construction on Welburn Middle School. We, we just wanted to be sure that that was ready to go before we actually started school for kids. So, in November, we considered four different calendars. DEIC members went out and got feedback on those calendars from their peers, colleagues, neighbors, different stakeholders. And then, in December, we came back to consider that informal feedback. And we actually made revisions to, especially Calendar B, I would say had great revisions during that meeting. And the DEIC voted to put three of those four calendars out for public input, and community input. So, we, we put those out. We voted to do that on December the 13th. The calendars were posted for input and voting on December the 18th. They, that window stayed open until January the 8th, at which time Chuck and one of the members of our technology department analyzed the data. And we are here to share a little bit about who responded and what that data looks like, and then to, as Dr. Ely said, make the recommendation for our calendar. There were around 2,000, 2,867 total votes for option A, B, or C. If you add the numbers, it's important to note, if you add these numbers up on the right-hand column with the different people, parents, teachers, other staff, students, community members, it's not going to equal that exact number, because some people are a parent and a teacher, or they might fall into multiple categories. So, I just wanted to point that out before we look at how they responded. So, as we look at our parent responses, we had 2,273. And you can clearly see that the majority of the votes fell for option B. In looking at our teachers, we had 406 respond. And again, option B was predominantly with right around 50, 60% the choice for our educators. Other school staff, we had 174 members respond. And again, B was the choice. We had 122 students respond, and their choice also was B, with the exception of, if you look at elementary, so I'm not sure who those learners were, those students were. And then, we had 85 community members vote, who do not have children in our system, but voted on our calendars, and they too selected B. Slightly lower percentage, but B was their option as well. As we looked at the comments, the comments fell in three or four different kind of categories, mainly three, though. Thanksgiving was the big hot button for everyone. As you can see, about 50% of the comments made on the calendars revolved around Calendars B and C in favor of a full week at Thanksgiving. So, there was positive feedback toward that. In looking at Calendar A, not in favor of a full week at Thanksgiving, we had around 26% of the comments hover in that area. Around 10% of the comments were about the school start and stop dates, and just comments about Christmas break, getting out right before Christmas, the travel. They're just varying opinions about, about that break. And then, miscellaneous comments, we had comments like, "Why would we get off on Columbus Day? He was maybe not the best example in history of the kind of person we would want to emulate for citizenship." And, you know, there are reasons for that, that many of our parents get that holiday off, depending on where they work. And that's a great day for parent conferences, for parents to be available, and for our teachers to meet with them. And we utilize that time at elementary for that. So, but those are things, obviously, you know, that many community members may or may not know. So, Calendar B, and just to remind you, is the option that we are recommending to the board. And we have professional learning days per our two-school, quite a few of them. We will use that for training and district initiatives, and of course, educators getting ready for kids. And I, I know that you all have looked at this calendar, so I'm not going to go through item by item. We do have, I do want to point out, we do have a two-comp days at We do have, I would do want to point out, we do have two comp days at, during the November week, on that Monday and Tuesday, which means staff members would need to accrue the hours for those days prior to that Thanksgiving break. And then we have another day in April that they would need to get six more hours prior to that date. So, any questions or comments about the calendar? We would like to recommend Calendar B. The majority of our community and staff and students and other stakeholders favored Calendar B.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
I do have one question. Were the comments made available to DEIC?
Actually, we shared this information with DEIC, and I had the comments there. We, I believe I attached the comments in the transmittal so that all our stakeholders that received the transmittal had access to the comments. But DEIC absolutely can have access to the comments. We went over, with DEIC, I actually had the, the raw data, and so we actually had the actual comments that everyone made, so we discussed it in that manner.
I have a comment. I sat in both those meetings that they discussed the calendar. Interestingly enough, the DEIC is made up of parents, for those of you who don't know, parents and community members, I mean, community members, parents.
Business members and educators.
Everybody's in there. It's a large group, and they really worked with Calendar B. And I really watched everyone come together and had different opinions and tried to work with each other, elementary to high school, community versus parents, parents of elementary school versus high school parents. And Calendar B is, is work of that entire group. And they spent at least, and this is just this one meeting, two and a half hours after school for these teachers. And I was really, really, really proud of how everybody worked together and tried to come up with a calendar that would, you know, kind of accommodate as many people. And looking at the whole and education and how that would work, they really worked hard. Dr. Trammell did a great job of leading that. The comments were available, we could see them. I thought she did a great job at DEIC explaining the comments, both for and against. It was clear, they were, they asked if they, we wanted more than one calendar to come to the board as your representative on that committee. I said no, because clearly this was the calendar that the group worked together to come up with, and then the community responded favorably to.
I would, I would say, for the record, I plan to vote affirmatively to follow the will of the people, but I'd like to protest of somebody notable in my life. Thank you.
Are there any other meaningful comments?
I think I would also like to go with the vote of the people. I guess my biggest concern is the Thanksgiving, I think the question I asked last time, having the whole week off for Thanksgiving, but I guess the concern for people with, trying to get daycare and stuff like that. But at the end of the day, we go where, I'm sorry.
They, they did discuss that heavily in DEIC, and, and both the community member, I mean, community members said, you know, I've got employees that don't, I, I don't have off, but my kids are off. I mean, that was brought up. It was discussed at great length, that particular issue. And then it finally was decided that they would have these calendars that had two distinct times, like they would have, you didn't get Thanksgiving off and you did get Thanksgiving that week off, and, and clearly Thanksgiving won out. So, it was a concern raised, and it was discussed.
We also, I think, included in the transmittal data on schools from Region 6, all the schools from, all school systems from Region 6 and their calendars, and so if that's helpful in the decision as well.
I think we're looking for a motion or action tonight on approving a calendar for next school year?
I'll move to, to accept Calendar B as the calendar moving forward to 2018-2019 school year.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item I1, consider approval of new administrator contracts as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Dr. Ely?
Mr. Harris, members of the board, we had the opportunity this year to look at some needs across the school system and fill a, a hole that we've been having in technology. We have someone in our district who works very hard with both our management information system and works to coordinate our campus technology facilitators and oversee the instructional technology implementation within the school district. But the, that combined job and the tremendous amount of work involved with both aspects of it has become untenable with the size that we are, adding five schools in five years and the tremendous amount of growth of students and devices that we have in the school system. With that, we went through a process to determine who the, who might be able to step in and split that role and have a true digital learning coordinator to be able to handle the instructional side of it, so we could have our current employee work on the management information side and continue the great work that she's doing there. We advertised this last month, and we've gone through a interview process, and we are proud, I am proud to recommend Stephanie Ryan to be our new digital learning coordinator. Stephanie is currently a mathematics teacher at A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School, and she has actually moved here from North Texas several years ago, three or four years ago, and she filled a similar position at the district level in her previous district. So, she comes to us not only with great experience as one of our classroom teachers and knowing what our classroom teachers need, but she's also done a similar position in a, in a district in her past. So, we're excited to recommend Stephanie Ryan. I don't know if Stephanie is here tonight. She is? Stephanie, would you stand? It is my distinct honor to recommend Stephanie Ryan as the digital learning coordinator for College Station ISD.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just have a comment. My daughter's pretty bummed. She understands.
She's a great math teacher.
Mm-hmm, she is.
Let me, let me ask a question. Since we're taking a, a math teacher, which I've also heard that from multiple people, a very good math teacher, have we made arrangements to fill that hole?
Where are we, Mr. McIntyre?
We're interviewing this week, actually.
We'll make the full transition once we have somebody in place.
Okay.
I make the recommendation that we approve the recommendation from the superintendent of schools to hire Stephanie as our digital learning coordinator.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Welcome. I guess she's already here. Okay, where are we? J1? J1, consideration, discussion, and possible action related to purchase of learning management system from Schoolology, Inc., per Department of Information Resources contract DIRTSO 3359 in the amount of $234,750 total over three years, using appropriated funds in the annual adopted general fund. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. We have identified through our long, district's long-range technology plan the need for a learning management system, and we have been working very hard this fall semester to determine what would be the best route for both our, for our teachers, for our students, and for our parents to be able to take part in this system. Dr. Penny Trammell, our chief academic officer, will talk a little bit about the process we used and some of the folks, and how we considered other options, and how we come to you this evening with a recommendation for working with Schoolology for a three-year contract. I will note for the board and the community, that number is a three-year number, and so that is not the annual price, but it has been something that we have in our annual school budget that you adopted in August. So, with that, Dr. Trammell?
Okay. Just for the board's information, we did get presentations and consider multiple formats or platforms. We considered Canvas, we considered Google Classroom, we considered informally Blackboard, and then we considered Schoolology. We actually had presentations from Schoolology Canvas and Google Classroom. We had a committee of around 30 people, which included campus principals, educators, technology folks, administrators, curriculum people, that listened to these presentations to make decisions about what we felt like would be in the best interest of the district. And you may be asking, wow, you know, why do we need this? What is this? Sometimes we get in our little education world and we make assumptions about things. And so, I'd like to share with you just a few of the things that will benefit our district from Schoolology, and I actually have two pages, so I won't share all of those things. But first and foremost, we can house our curriculum all in one place in Schoolology. It will allow for collaborations across campuses, it will allow for collaboration with educators in other districts, or, you know, in the nation, not just in our state. It will be kind of a one-stop shop for curriculum for all content areas. Eventually, we, as the curriculum team, as an aside, we are working on the four core areas at this, this time. Professional learning can be delivered through this platform. Campus principals can have their professional learning communities set up as courses in Schoolology. Schoolology actually pulls in a variety, like hundreds of different platforms. If you have a kindergartner, you may have received, you know, you may get little things from CSOL to see little things that they're doing in the classroom. That pulls right into Schoolology. Edmodo pulls right into Schoolology. So, many, many, many hundreds of platforms pull right in, and these are platforms that our educators are using right now with our kids. From a parent's perspective, you have to log in, or, or you have to have multiple logins for all these different things that you access for your children. So, the benefit of having a system like this for parents is you have a parent profile, and if you have three kids, then your three children are attached to that profile. So, you log into Schoolology and you're in. You can see their grades, you can see homework, you can see the assignments that are in there that they're working on. You basically have a one-stop shop for your kids. You can receive your campus or your class newsletters or grade-level newsletters through that format, so there's no logging in and out for parents. From an educator's perspective, when we look at assessments and working collaboratively throughout our district as we grow, and then within our teams on, in our, on our campuses, they can create assessments, they can share them across the way. So, they can, learners can take those assessments in Schoolology digitally, or the educators can print them out and grade them. Teachers can grade the assessments on their mobile phones wherever they are. If they've got some downtime, they no longer have to have a stack of papers if they don't choose that. They can grade assignments. They can actually give feedback to kids in voice format or written format. Kids have many options in the system for completing assignments. So, if my child is in special education and there's a co-teacher assigned to that child, and they're in a co-teach classroom, the co-teacher and the teacher can both put in assignments. The co-teacher can modify, or accommodates, the correct word for that, assignments for that learner. If that child has an accommodation to give, to respond orally to assignments instead of in a written form, they can do that. So, lots of functionality and flexibility. When we think about RTI, our Response to Intervention Program for our struggling learners, there are many functions in there that would be beneficial to them. One that would ease the burden on teachers and campus administration and taking our personnel to sit in meetings many, many hours would be that it, it will do progress monitoring. So, you can actually track progress across different assignments on different standards if you want to. So, many, many functionalities. I was going to also, let's see if there's like a major thing. Oh, you know, sometimes we get in a stigma about multiple-choice questions or essay questions, or, or, you know, certain kinds of tests or questions. There are over 20 different forms or ways to respond in Schoolology that an educator could choose to use for kids to respond. They can draw a response, the teacher can see that. I mean, it's, it's just a tremendously robust platform for teaching and learning. And we love the parent feature of that as well, because if my daughter tells me she has no homework, guess what? I just pop in there and I can see homework for all of my kids. So, it's a, it's a, we hope that it will increase collaboration between the school and the home, but we also see that it's going to be a tremendous benefit for our educators and our kids. So, in considering all the platform, Schoolology was overwhelmingly unanimously the choice by the committee, and we felt like it was the most intuitive, the most kid-friendly, the most teacher-friendly. And Canvas, we felt like was geared more towards secondary and not as the, the visual appeal and the ease of use was a little more cumbersome. And Google Classroom, you can use Google Classroom within Schoolology, which is the cool thing. Google Classroom is a less robust, it doesn't have anywhere near the function that Schoolology has. So, at this time, we would love for you to consider the purchase of Schoolology as our learning management platform.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure, I just heard my son from West Texas, my adult son, a sigh of relief that they not have this. Because you know how many times he told me he didn't have any homework?
Right. I have two high school sons. Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
I'm, I'm excited about the offerings and the fact that it's a platform that organizes everything. I don't understand the education side as well as you all, obviously, but I'm excited that you're excited about it, but I, I can tell you.
It's awesome.
I do understand the parent side.
Yeah.
And, and it's, anything that we can do to increase the information level of parents and the involvement that can flow from that, I'm excited about. And even, I'm a fully engaged parent, I would say. I have to have an unnamed member of my household go through the multiple logins to, for the kids. So, this is, the fact that there's one login, even I can remember that, so that's, that's awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Got a motion?
Do we have a motion?
I would move approval of the purchase of the district-wide learning management system from Schoolology via the Department of Information Resources in the amount of $234,750 total over three years, using unappropriated funds in the annual adopted general fund. How's that?
I think that's great.
Excellent.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Item J2, consideration, discussion, and possible action related to the renewal of the Mizzouni Student Data Management Warehouse application for the amount of $61,300 to be paid from the 2017-18 general fund. Dr. Ely?
Mr. Harris, members of the board, this is the second year that we've been doing this. We went through a similar process to what Dr. Trammell talked about more than a year ago, to look at a data management warehouse for, that would be applicable and customizable to our needs here in College Station ISD. We've been working with Mizzouni since that time, so this would be authorization for the second year of working with them for those needs and with more- And with more information on that, is Greg McIntyre, Chief Administrative Officer. Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Mr. Harris, members of the board. You're right, this is our second year with Mazuni, which is really a student data management application, if you will. If you think for a moment, in schools, we have lots of different kinds of data. Everything from home address to attendance records, certainly grades, demographics, enrollment. There's also kinds of testing data, like SATs or ACTs, STAR data, and just the local teacher test that we administer. Mazuni, well, let me just say, all of that data and all those different systems poses a problem, because it does create multiple logins for our own teachers, administrators, and others in the district to be able to access that information. So year before last, we put together a committee that, much like with Schoolology, we took a look at several different applications, visited a couple of places, like Pasadena ISD and so forth. And Mazuni was the one that we began to work with last year. This is the second year of what we plan to at least be a three-year partnership with Mazuni, to pull all of those into really a one-stop solution, so that we have one login to take a look at that, at that information. And not just to be able to have the information and take a look at what maybe past trends have been, but it can also take a look and possibly predict future trends for student progress based on how they're doing in school over time. It also certainly helps, if you might imagine, whenever we have students go from one campus level to the next, like fourth grade to fifth grade, we go to intermediate schools. In the old days, we used to literally have file boxes with folders, and so the next school would have to get that box of folders, and it would go to the counselor's office and sit there for a little while until we had a chance to file it, and so, and those kinds of things. And then if you were a teacher, a counselor, an assistant principal, you'd have to go and find it, much like a card catalog system. And so what this does is really digitizes all of those, puts it in one place, even though there are multiple sources, and it fully integrates with our current system, which is e-school in College Station ISD. And so what we'd like to do is renew this partnership and continue to work with Mazuni.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
I'll move that we approve the motion as presented. How about that?
I think that will work. We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Item K-1, consider approval of the guaranteed maximum price, the total project budget, authorization for the superintendent or his designee to execute the necessary documents associated therewith, and the authorization to proceed with the work associated with the construction of the renovations to middle schools and South Knoll Elementary School Project utilizing funds from the 2015 bond funds. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. In November 2015, voters in College Station ISD authorized the school district to be able to do a number of projects. The three biggest projects were elementary number 10, middle school number 3, and intermediate school number 3. But we also had some significant projects in there as well to address some of the needs at some of our older and existing campuses. You'll recall that last summer, we did work at Oakwood and Cypress Grove to add flexible instructional spaces, and that is the part of the project that we will be coming to you for this summer, but to accomplish that at the two existing middle schools, Anam Consolidated Middle School and College Station Middle School. We also have money in there for deferred maintenance to address needs at South Knoll Elementary School. More information on these projects is John Hall, Executive Director for Facilities. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Mr. Harris, members of the board. As Dr. Ely mentioned, one of the projects identified for the 2015 bond package was for the creation of some flexible learning spaces, not only the intermediate schools, but also the two middle schools, and for some much-needed renovation work over at South Knoll Elementary School. So this agenda item represents the work related to preparing the GMP and the total project budget for that project. The GMP for this project was based on the request for competitive sealed proposals process, which was advertised to the public as required by statute. The CMT Risk Contractor Force, Pepper Lawson, coordinated the competitive seal process for this, and Theo Rouse, Tom Stewart, and I attended the bid opening on December 14th. So in addition to the renovation work for creating these collaborative areas or flexible learning spaces, we did pick up a couple of small items as well. In particular, over College Station Middle School, we extended one wall that's up close to the security vestibule and receptionist area, all the way up to the deck, because it was open air from the middle of the building over. And so we were able to pick that up to help fix a pretty severe acoustic problem. It was just really, really loud during class changes over there. So we gave some mercy to our receptionists over there, and we're going to seal that off, so they can hear a little better during class changes. In addition to this, over at South Knoll, this was the last remaining campus location that we had that didn't have fire sprinklers. And so that was a, this is a box I've been wanting to check off for quite a while. So this would be good for us to get the last remaining campus location with fire sprinklers. And while we were at it, while we're tearing up the world doing all of that, we also figured this would be the perfect time to go ahead and upgrade some of our finishes over there. So we're picking up flooring, paint, and millwork, and correcting some ADA access issues over there as well. So in consultation with ISD and VOK Architects, Pepper Lawson Construction has reviewed the final scope of work, reputation of subcontractors, quality of materials specified, and other relevant factors in arriving at the GMP for this project, which is proposed to you tonight in the amount of $2,586,246. A summary of the total project breakdown is included here for you. We actually started off with a planning allocation of $3,200,000 for this work. So we have the GMP for the $2,586,246, and I'm not going to read all of these off, but you can see all of our soft costs listed on the left side with the corresponding amounts on the right side, which add up to a grand total of, for a total proposed project budget of $3,188,749, which I'm proud to say is a little bit under our allocation there. We actually saved $11,251 on this round. So it is recommended that the Board of Trustees of College Station Independent School District consider approval of the guaranteed maximum price of $2,586,246 from Pepper Lawson Construction and the total project budget in the amount of $3,188,749 for the renovations to middle schools and South Knoll Elementary School Project. It is further recommended that the superintendent or his designee be authorized to sign any necessary documents to implement the guaranteed maximum price, and that the Board of Trustees authorizes the commencement of the work associated with this project. And with all of that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I'm a huge fan of the flexible learning spaces, and I really liked they were, the way they were done over at Oakwood. I got to see the before and after at Oakwood, and it looks pretty seamless over there. Like, the work done was really, really good. And then I know they're using them like crazy at Cypress Grove as well. I don't know what that looked like before, but we're there now and they look great.
We received a lot of good, good feedback from folks about it.
Yeah.
Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I would move approval of the project as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we are adjourned.